All right, good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, December 2, 2025. Select Board meetings are broadcast live and are also recorded by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 9, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ryan, if you could read our community prayer?
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility, and especially we lift up prayers for all the citizens of our community that we've been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. And just before we move forward with our meeting just to the board, we have a long agenda this evening, so if anyone needs a quick break, let me know, and we'll cause a five-minute recess, okay? All right. So the first item on our agenda, as always, is citizens' participation. We do ask that any citizens addressing the board keep their comments to a maximum of three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to address the board this evening? Mr. Bellman. Hard to see you back there.
Is there a microphone here? Oh, yeah, okay. Excellent. All right. How you doing? Robert Bellman, 26 Gate Street. I'm prepared here. All right. First thing is, you posted an agenda for tonight's meeting for an executive session. All right? In that meeting, you failed to state the litigant of you guys are going to executive session. It's important for the public to know specifically who the town, who is suing the town or the town is suing. Open meeting law requires you provide the name of the litigant. And you may ask why. How can a resident request information on an executive session if we don't know who you guys are talking about? Now, the board has already been talked to by the Attorney General's Office about being specific when you go into executive session. What are you talking about in executive session for litigation? Couple of open meeting law complaints about that have already been passed from 2011 to now. So you guys need to do better. Whoever's posting these agendas, got to be specific when you go into executive session of who you're going to talk about. Okay? We all have a right to know, okay, how the town is using our tax-paying dollars, whether it's being our law firm or our town employees here for it, and our town dollars. Okay? In the past, Allen Jermaine, former police detective dispatcher, all right, was given $3,000. No one knew about that $3,000 until I requested the information, okay, and put it out there. Okay? This is our tax-paying dollars, and we don't know why he got paid $3,000 because it doesn't really say why he's getting paid $3,000. So, next one is waiving the bylaw that you're talking about tonight for elected officials to have two positions. I'm against that. Okay? Finance committee should be the finance committee. That's all you should deal with, is finance committee stuff. Okay? That way you have clean hands on anything going on with this town. Next thing is the union church. All right, there should be no land exchange for the union church. We put so much CPA money into that building over the many years, okay, that they should be thankful for us and just give us the land. Just whatever you guys want to do, there shouldn't be no transfer of, here, we'll take this stuff in the back and then give you stuff on the side. They should just give it to us. Okay? It's a small thing. If they need parking area, they got the whole cemetery to park. All right. Town health insurance, that's got to change. That's got to change. It's going to open us up to liability in the main. If somebody really gets sick, sick, sick in this town, we're going to be in deep doo-doo. All right? Because you get millions of dollars with somebody in, for a head injury or a major heart attack. The next thing is the town planner. Someone actually talked about this, is where's the town planner? Okay? Who's taking over his job, okay, while he's not here? That we need somebody to work with the planning department. So we need to know where that's going at. And then finally is, I looked at my email today looking for a resolution for the emails that went out. When I sent an email out about your last meeting with the finance committee, I didn't hear from any of the select board members about it. Nobody responded to me. Okay? It wasn't until the second email I sent out that said that Pat Mahas' comments about me, all right, were inappropriate. And the members, I'm sorry, also the members at that meeting. The other email that he sent out that you all received, okay, I got from the town administrator, I talked to him. Well, that's not a good resolution. I talked to him. Okay? He's an appointed member. What he did was wrong in violation of our town policies. You hold people accountable. Okay? If you're just going to turn around and give a slap on the wrist for it, I don't see them doing that to me. Okay? So he needs to be either removed or a public apology, and I want a public apology. And he's said numerous times, he will never do a public apology to me. All right? I think I'm done for today. So please, if you guys could answer these questions at the next meeting, okay? Because when we have citizen participation, we want to participate. Well, part of participation is a two-way street here. Okay? We're participating to you, and then you guys reciprocate and participate to us. So if someone brings something up, put it on the next agenda and talk about it.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Seeing now, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is an Economic Development Plan Committee. Mr. Roger Shores Jr., the Business Community Representative. Mr. Shores, thank you for joining us this evening and just for, if you got to identify yourself.
Yep, Roger Shores.
And tell us quickly why you're interested in this.
Roger Shores Jr., 24 Rochester Road. Grew up in Carver, had a nice career in senior management, manufacturing and finance companies. Came back here about four years ago and really just want to continue to provide any value I can to the town, and I think this might be something I can help with.
All right. Appreciate you stepping up. Any questions for Mr. Shores?
No. If not, is there? I'll make a motion to appoint.
Mr. Carter?
Sure. I remember, were you on the, another committee for the town administrator?
Yeah, Town Administrator Steering Committee, and I served.
I remember your face in our meeting before.
Yeah, I also serve on the.
Earth Removal.
Earth Removal Committee. We just got out of session, so I'm a little rattled.
So it sounds like you've got a lot of experience in your town residence. What, do you have any thoughts on what kind of economic development you'd like to see come into Carver?
My background, I have a lot of background in manufacturing and light assembly. I mean, I think that might be something. I don't know what's available, and I really don't have any preconceived notions of what the town can do and, you know, what's available. So I'd rather let it play out through whatever committee and see where we go from there. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Roger Shores Jr. to the Economic Development Plan Committee.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Steering Committee, excuse me.
It's the Economic Development Planning Committee or Steering Committee. Yes, it's different in the agenda than on the, uh...
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Shores. The town clerk will send you a letter of appointment, and then you come in and get sworn in.
It's warranted. Okay, thank you. Do we need to open the hearing next?
Thank you. Nope, nope, because first, we have our next agenda item, which is a commitment, an appointment to the Agricultural Commission, Sharon Mish. Is Sharon here? Sharon, welcome.
Hi.
Thanks for coming in this evening.
Thanks.
If you could just tell us a little bit about why you would like to be on this committee?
Sure. I was on it before, some time ago. I kind of had to let it lapse. We had an elderly pony that we were caring for, and as he aged, his care became more intense, and I just couldn't continue to go to the meetings and give the committee the time. I just couldn't. So he went to heaven this spring, so I'm available, and I thought I'd sign up again.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? And if not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Sharon Mish to the Agricultural Commission.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
And as I mentioned to Mr. Shores, you'll get a letter of appointment from the town clerk, and then you can come in and be sworn in.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, next, we have a Class II license hearing. It's a request for a Class II used car license. Philip, I hope I pronounced this name correctly, Philip Shanis?
Shanis, yes.
Thank you. Doing business at Cape Cod Auto Wholesale located 9 Island Farm Road. Is there a motion to open this hearing?
Some of.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. I know there's a lot of people here that would like to speak on this tonight, so we'll do this in this order. First, Mr. Shanis will be able to speak, and I'll allow the board to ask any questions that they may have. I know we have a lot of residents that would like to speak on this. Before they do, if it's okay with them, we have our building inspector here, Mr. Rod Palmer. I think he may have some information that might be helpful to everybody. So with the permission of the residents, if you'd like to go sooner, I'll let you, but I think it might be helpful to let Mr. Palmer go first. Mr. Shanis, do you tell us why you want this?
Well, it's kind of a long story, but it's very hard to get a used car nowadays at a good price, and we have a unique opportunity to do that. I've been doing it, first of all, I'm retired. Worked for the restaurant business for about 25 years, opened the Olive Gardens in the area. When I retired, I saw I had a unique opportunity to offer people some used cars through my father-in-law's dealership, Cape Cod Auto Wholesale. We did this, it was a chance for me to work with my son a little bit and make a little extra money sort of thing, but more importantly, to offer people some cars that are kind of under $10,000 with a good background, ones that are reliable, that sort of thing. He passed away about two months ago, and his license expires at the end of December, so I was trying to find a way to continue doing it somewhere in town. It's not worth it to get a separate location because I only sell a couple cars a month, something like that. So I wanted to do it out of the house, but it's mainly done online, so it's not like I'd be having people come to the house or having cars with for-sale signs on them, that sort of thing. Very low-key and low visibility, that sort of thing.
Okay, so I guess I do have a couple of questions if you're only going to do this online. So you're not going to have another location where the cars are going to be stored or something like that?
Correct. The cars go right from where I get them, which is at Corona's Auto Wholesale Auto Salvage in Hartford, Connecticut, to the customers themselves. I do have a garage that I worked out with Steve Gardner at SGX Automotive in Plymouth that can take care of if a car I get needs a little bit of work or something like that, but basically goes right from where I pick it up to the person that bought it. It's already sold by the time I get it. That's the plan.
So where does someone see, view the car if they want to, if they want to view it before they buy it?
That's a great, great question. We have a list, a stock list of photos that we get as the cars become available, and I show them different folks, they pick the ones they want, much like Carvana is a good, sort of very small version of what Carvana does.
So if somebody wants to physically come and see the car, they don't want to see a photo, they want to see the car, there's no opportunity for them to do that?
Essentially, there isn't, no. But they're kind of going on my judgment, that sort of thing. If you take a look on Facebook, you see I have nothing but great reviews, which is hard to do nowadays, over 50 of them, that shows the kind of person I am, so I kind of do the work for them. And of course, if they buy it, it's not as they, as they thought, then I can still return it myself, too, so.
Well, my concern is that obviously you're in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So, you know, you're telling me that there'll never, ever, ever be a car in that neighborhood. If somebody wants to see a car, they want to look at the engine, they want to do whatever they want to do, they can't, they can't do that. That car will never be on Island Farm Road. Is that what you're telling me?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
Oh.
Ms. Hewens?
I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I have some information from the butter who could not be here.
Okay.
I can do it later or now.
Why don't we wait until after Mr. Palmer speaks, and then when the butters come up, we probably have the correct time to do it.
Good idea.
Do you have anything, anyone else have any questions?
From the residents and Mr. Palmer.
Yeah, Mr. Carter?
I just got a quick question more. I guess I don't understand the difference between this license request versus kind of like working out of your home. Couldn't, and I'm not asking how you're set up, but typically, it seems like it's a home office type of thing.
Correct.
You're coordinating from one location to the next.
Right.
Would you set up like a limited liability corporation with a P.O. box in Carver as your address, then you could work out of your home? I'm thinking you work out of your home as the home office, and you're coordinating this person and that person, and you have the best of both worlds. Could, is that an option that you looked at, or is something limiting you from doing that?
Say that again now?
If you were to set up, whatever company you use, as a limited liability corporation, it's just a few hundred dollars to set it up, and you've got a P.O. box for your mail, that would be the Carver Post Office, and then you run it as a home office, you're coordinating the purchase and sale of these vehicles from one location to the other, I just don't know why this license is required if you're not setting up like a shop someplace where you're going to have cars, mechanics, and things like that. I guess I don't know the difference.
Mr. Palmer may be able to speak more.
Right. I have to have a, it's a little bit confusing, but it's not just the town, it's the state. I have to have some kind of an address to make the state happy to get their permission.
Mr. Palmer, would you like to come up and join in?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, citizens. My name is Rod Palmer, Carver Building Commissioner, so I was asked to come here this evening and just sort of opine on the Class II dealership license and the requirements and, so as a zoning enforcement officer, it would be my opinion that under no circumstances should a vehicle that is owned by a Class II dealer be garaged, stored, or displayed from a residential property at any time, whether it be for five days or five minutes. So, and I understand that for an individual to buy vehicles at a wholesale auction house, they need to have or possess this Class II license. Without, without that, they can't. So it would be my opinion that any person having a Class II dealership from their, as a residential property, that's your primary address, vehicles should never be stored there under any circumstances. I know that there are some folks that will buy an automobile online through an auction in California and sell it to somebody in New Hampshire and arrange for transportation and logistics to get it there, having never actually touched the vehicle, and I'm sure companies like Carvana and others do that. So, and that's not much different from other folks working from home, working from their computer, buying and selling items, whether it be an automobile or furniture or anything for that matter. So for a Class II license to be issued, if it's issued to a person residing within a residential neighborhood from a single-family home, vehicles should never be stored there for any reason at any time.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Okay.
Any questions for Mr. Palmer?
Sure. How do you enforce that? That's a good question. So, you know, I would, in a matter like, a situation like that, you know, I would perhaps entertain the idea of conditioning a license with, with that condition, that vehicles never be at the house. And if they are, that person's license can be revoked, and without that license, that person is out of business. They can't purchase vehicles at a, at an auction or online, or at an online auction. So I think the penalty for not complying with that restriction or regulation would be to forfeit their license. I'm not sure what else you can do.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Carter?
Sharon, I just don't know if everybody else can see this, but I'm not sure with this diagram we're giving of a house with the orange U, what's that supposed to mean?
I don't know.
Oh.
I'm not sure, I've not seen that.
I can speak to that. I actually put it in because the application required some sort of a diagram. That's just a diagram of the house, basically.
But what does the orange U mean, though? And that's just right there, I can see that.
The instruction said showing any driveways, so that's just the driveway. It's kind of a moot point since we're not going to be storing vehicles there.
Okay, and I, not to put you on the spot, if you don't know this, is that can someone be given this license by using a P.O. box and not their residence with the state?
I'm not sure. I believe the state requires that you have a physical address. For what purpose, I'm not sure, but I don't think that the state of Massachusetts will allow a license for Class II without a physical address. I don't think it could be a P.O. box. I think you have to have an office.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Mr. Shanis, if you'd like to have a seat, and I'll open it up to any residents that would like to come up and address the board. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the board? No?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I will say, before we start, that the board received a number of letters from residents, and I will ask that these letters all be entered into the minutes of the meeting. We got letters from Dan and Diana Shannon, Anita Carey, Mark Carey, Susan Gilmore, and Keith and Lynn Batus. So if we could enter those into the minutes of the meeting. And if you'd like to just identify yourselves, folks.
Hi, I'm Anita Carey. I am at 8 Island Farm Road. I directly abut the Shanises. I suppose my biggest concern is that this would now be the third business in the same household. There's already a landscaping business, doesn't really affect us.
I'm sorry, there's already what?
A landscaping business.
Okay. In a residential area?
In, there, at the same residence, at 9 Island Farm.
There's an actual landscaping business there?
Yes.
Okay.
Trucks, landscaping.
Okay.
Also, at the same residence, there's a doggy daycare, which I believe has since moved, but it has been there. When that was approved, we came to the meeting, we saw what it would entail. It was a small business. The owner of the business was picking up the dogs in a small little shuttle bus, very small, maybe five, six dogs, I think. So one vehicle come down the street, taken care of, separate, one vehicle leaving. Perfect. We approved. My husband came here to make sure that he showed that this was something that the neighborhood was willing to accept. It wasn't going to increase traffic, one bus. It was actually kind of cute.
And ma'am, I don't, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but we have to keep our comments to what's on the agenda tonight, which is just the Class II license for the used car.
My fear was that that changed. That was what was approved, and that's not what happened. The bus stopped, it was everybody dropping cars off back and forth. So my fear is, once this license is approved, how are we going to keep this from keeping it the way it's supposed to be? Because clearly, the other business did not. It was supposed to be one vehicle in, one vehicle out. How are we going to monitor to make sure that this doesn't change?
I would now like to turn to, anyone have any questions for? No? Okay.
Sure, I'll ask a quick question. If the, if it was contingent upon no vehicles being there and subject to revoking of the Class II license, would that appease the neighbors or, so that would be, that's why I asked the question about the control. So if there, if there's not supposed to be any vehicles there, and, you know, you contact the zoning board and say, hey, it's, there's a violation, and that causes the license to be revoked, then they can't do, they wouldn't be able to be, you know, couldn't do it, couldn't have the business anymore, couldn't even buy cars?
So in monitoring that, you just have to look for vehicles without plates? Do dealer plates count to multiple?
Well, anything, all that, all the above, dealer plates.
Actually, you submitted a formal complaint to the Building Commissioners Zoning Enforcement Officer. You don't go straight to ZBAs.
So you have to put in a formal complaint, they'd have to investigate it, and it'd be subject to revoking the Class II license. That's why I asked the question if, you know, how do you manage it or enforce it?
Right, that's, that's my fear is, you know, how, how are we going to do that? I'm not going to be watching out my window constantly to make sure.
To follow up on Mr. Ryan's question, my understanding that Mr. Shanis's father's license was out of Yarmouth, is that, do you know anything?
Well, according, with the letter that we received, it has a Yarmouth address at the bottom. So I don't know why that can't stay. Maybe it's not a physical location.
Well, licenses aren't transferable from town to town.
But, quite frankly, Ms. Hewens, if we can call Mr. Shanis up later, but if questions about his license probably should be addressed.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Okay. Okay, fine. Anything else? Anything else, ma'am?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Did you want to talk about your experience?
Mark Carey, 8 Island Farm Road, husband of Anita. Sorry, I'm going to adjust myself, I just went through back surgery. My pants are falling. So just a letter, I don't know if you guys have received the letter from Cape Cod Auto Wholesale, and if not, may I enter this?
Sure.
Yeah.
Is it this one?
Yeah, we've got it. It is in the back.
Oh, you do have it. Is that the one at the back? Okay.
All right. So I want to issue, well, let's start from the top. I don't want to read the whole thing. If you all have read it, then I don't need to reassure you of everything, but I want to reassure you that there won't be any cars displayed in the yard or around the street, and customers generally won't be, generally won't be coming down to the house. Most of what I do involves finding specific cars for buyers, picking them up, and delivering them directly, so there would be no increased traffic or activity beyond what you already see. But if you look up further, my son Jake and I have, as a side project, partly helped my father-in-law, whose dealership has been going through financial difficulties with his recent passing, his license will expire at the end of the year. I'd like to continue buying and selling a smaller number of cars each month using my home address as the office location. I'm probably pretty sure that you're all aware that he had submitted a license prior to this one, stating that he would have no more than four cars on property. Once that was rejected, he immediately submitted another application for a zero-car policy with only office administrative duties on site. Right now, there's two cars sitting on his driveway. One has a veterans' plate, which I'm not sure if any of them are veterans, and one has a dealer, car dealership plate on it right now. So there's two cars in that driveway. One didn't have a plate two days ago, now it has a plate, and it's a veterans' plate. So I don't know where that veterans' plate came from, and I don't know where the dealership came from unless he's still using his father-in-law's, that expires on December 31st. So just in question, I don't know, but this has been ongoing for a period of time, and we've ignored it because it hasn't caused a major disturbance, but if he gets this license to operate on this property, who knows where it's going to go? to go? Who knows? I don't know, and I don't want to be the police on the, on the block, but I myself just thinks that it's just the wrong way to go, but it's your decision ultimately, and I will do it in your hands.
Other questions, Mr. Carey? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Appreciate it.
Ms. Hewens, I know you have a communication for residents. Would you like to speak to the board on this?
Yes, thank you. So, one of the neighbors, Keith Vadas, came to, got in touch with me on town email and asked to meet with me. So I met with him. This had to be sometime last week, I think, and he gave me this small packet of material, and I think I made a copy for each of you. His, he wanted to emphasize that the applicant is an extremely nice gentleman. The family's very nice. This had nothing, this was nothing personal. But apparently, they've been selling cars on the lot for some period of time. And in his words, has been selling cars from there for a timeframe, question mark, so it's apparently been a while. No one's really sure how long. They have been visible from the street, and he's bringing cars down the street currently, as we speak, using dealer plates, which Mr. Carey also testified to. There are other businesses on the lot, which is actually another zoning infraction that we, we can't personally address, but I think can be given to the building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, and he's the one who could address those issues. So the neighbors are extremely worried. This has actually been going on there on the lot. I don't know, I don't remember him ever coming to us for a previous license. So I suspect that the letter Mr. Carey showed us is on stationery that probably is his, his father-in-law's dealership, and that's based in Yarmouth. And I understand, not everyone understands the, the ways town works, but the way towns work, but you can't transfer a dealership from one town to another, a license. So this is definitely a problem as, as I see it, and I think apparently there's an existing problem, which personally I don't want to add to for the neighbors. There's some zoning violations down there already. I prefer not to add to that as well. And I do have, actually, I showed Mr. Vadas a couple of licenses we've given out for online licensing in the past. This was years ago. This was a couple of years ago to...
So, just so you know, so after, after this and the residents finish, I am going to ask Mr. Palmer to come back up and give us a rundown of any other Class II licenses that have been issued in residential neighborhoods.
Okay, but I just want to explain to you that I showed this to Mr. Vadas. I gave him copies of it to take with him. And one of them refers to a business on Main Street that I'm not going to name. We gave a license to, to sell online. The provisions say all vehicles will be placed in the back parking lot, because this is not a residential, it's a all-zone commercial. No vehicles on display, no vehicles to be viewed in view of the street, no flags indicating used cars for sale. Well, I drove by there, maybe, I don't know, six months after that. The vehicles were all out front. There were used car flags all over the place, and so we had to bring him in. And, you know, it's just a pain in the neck for everybody, including the person having the dealership. So I just want to make it very clear to people that if we do do this, these, these conditions have to stick. We can't just make them and then go, oh, well, you know, I liked the flag, so I wasn't going to say anything, or whatever it is. A lady who lives up in North Carver, or no, sorry, she's in South Carver, she got one for her home, and there have, the, the conditions were no vehicle or transport carriers, or transport carriers allowed at the address, no vehicles to be transported to and from the address, no vehicles for sale at the residence, including private sales, no storage or repair. So that was really pretty thorough. And there's not, hasn't been one complaint from her particular license. To the best of my knowledge, it's been a number of years. So that's the kind of story I like to hear, okay, here, and someone sticks with the rules. But I just want it to be clear that I think there's a problem there, and, and I don't think it's any personality thing. I think that your neighbors respect you. But I also believe that this picture that we have here apparently shows the used cars way in the back of the lot. So they're not visible from the street, but they're there. So, but, you know, I just, little loopholes just don't cut it in my, my book.
Are there any other residents that want to speak to this? Mr. Bellvin? Mr. Bellvin, you're not a neighbor, are you, correct?
I'm not a neighbor, I'm a resident. Again, Robert Bellvin, 26 Gate Street. So one of my questions was, does he have the right to sell cars of his own at his house? I mean, if you're a private resident, you have the right to sell your own vehicles.
You can't run a commercial business in a residential zone.
I'm not talking about a commercial business. I'm talking about somebody who has that business license, but I have my own vehicle, say, and I want to sell my own vehicle to somebody else. All right, it's not one that I bought from an auction, it's my own vehicle.
We will ask Mr. Palmer that question when he's there.
Okay, that's my first one. My second one is, she wrote notes from that resident that she had spoke to, and you put notes or letters from residents.
Yeah.
I think those should be read and given the same opportunity that that resident had to have it in there.
This resident, by the way, I'm Sarah Hewens, and this letter...
You are?
Yes, well, you called me she.
Oh, thank you. Well, you're not?
And this was given to me because Mr. Vadas is going to be out of town today. That's up to the chair if he wants to read the other letter.
Right, well, that's what I'm just saying, is if you're going to allow one other person to speak on behalf of somebody else, then I think those other residents who couldn't show up that decided to give testimony by written, that that should be read out to the residents too, so we know where they feel.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you.
Mr. Palmer, could you come back up and just update the board on a couple of things? First of all, to Mr. Bellvin's question, if a resident wants to sell a car that they own, can they do that? And then if you could just give us a rundown of any Class II licenses that are currently issued and located in residential neighborhoods.
So, an individual can certainly sell their car from their front yard. If it's their vehicle, their own personal vehicle, they can sell their car, or their boat, or their RV, or their bicycle. They can sell whatever they want from their front yard. The state does have limitations on how many vehicles you can sell annually. I believe it's three vehicles annually. In my, in my time being here, I don't think I've ever received a complaint from anybody in town relative to a neighbor, or a brother, or anybody for that matter in town, selling vehicles in their front yard. I know that, you know, I've put vehicles in my front yard for sale, my neighbors have, they sell, and that's usually it, one and done. So they can certainly do that. But, but that is a personal, private sale. It's not a commercial Class II dealership affiliated sale.
All right. And as far as any Class II dealerships that may be currently located in residential neighborhoods?
So, I can't, I know there are a number of residential licenses in, in Carver, and the same regulations should be applicable to those as well, that anybody having a Class II dealership, and, and I, I believe that some of these have been issued for decades. But there should be no vehicles stored at these properties under any circumstances, regardless of how long they've been in business. You know, I have with me copies of our zoning bylaws going back to 1964, and the use regulations, the use table from 1964 does not allow folks to have a, I shouldn't say have a Class II dealership, but does not allow folks to sell automobiles from a residential property.
Okay. I have a general question about licenses, and I'll, whoever can answer it, answer it. So, if somebody wants a Class II license, and they, why couldn't they just get a business address, and, you know, a, a business suite somewhere, and, and use that as their residence to get the license? Couldn't they do that? And that way, you'd be assured that they would never have any license, any vehicles at the residence, because they wouldn't have a residence. There would be no residence on the thing. It would just be, you know, whatever, whatever street, suite number six.
And we have a bunch of those in North Carver, actually.
Sure, certainly we do. Is there any reason a license couldn't be issued in that way?
I think typically, well, for me, when, it's hard for me to just shoot from the hip and say yes. So when folks explore the idea of starting a business, they would come to our office and fill out an application. It's a use and occupancy application. They fill out the application, they outline the dynamics of their business, the operation, the location, and we look at each application, and we look at it for two purposes. We look at it to make sure that that building that they hope to occupy can legally accommodate that use, and we also look at the zoning district, and is that particular use, whether it be a car dealership or any other use for that matter, we make sure that that zoning district can accommodate that use. So it's sort of a two-test application, the zoning aspect and the building code aspect of it. So, you know, to answer that, as I sit here right now, might be challenging to say, yes, you can have that business in any other location.
Okay.
Mark?
Yes.
Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 58, requires a physical address for a Class II license in Massachusetts.
All right, thank you. That answers that question. All right.
But, but that doesn't mean they couldn't have a physical license be at one of those warehouses in North Carver.
That's, that's correct. That's correct. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Palmer? All right. Are any other residents interested in addressing the board? Ms. Hewens, do you have a couple of questions for Mr. Sheinuss regarding his license? I'm running.
Well, yeah, I mean, I could ask what, what...
Mr. Sheinuss, will you?
Thank you. So in this letter you wrote to your neighbors on November 14th, you said that, that you've been selling cars here and there with your son, partly as a side project and partly to help your father-in-law, whose dealership has been going through financial difficulties. So the license that you're currently operating under is out of Yarmouth, the town of Yarmouth gave to your father-in-law?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay. As far as I know, and Mr. Palmer can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that's transferable to another town.
That's correct. It's not transferable.
So your license from Yarmouth is not valid here in Carver?
That's correct.
Okay, but you're doing it at the site anyway?
I'm doing it out of the Yarmouth location, but I do bring a car home with a dealer plate on it periodically, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Sheinuss? All right. Open it up to discussion for the board.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I think we should ask the people who submitted these letters if they would like their letters read into the record, or...
Well, they'll all be included in the minutes. If folks are here and they would like to read their letters, I'll give them the opportunity to read their letters. Is there anyone here? No?
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. Yeah, all these, all these will be in the, in the minutes of the meeting, and people will be able to, to read them.
I just wanted to make sure.
No, I appreciate that. All right. Anyone? Well, I mean, I will, I will start it off, and I'll just say I understand why Mr. Sheinuss wants the license, and I, I appreciate this, but I don't think this is an appropriate spot for a Class II, a Class II license, and I don't feel comfortable issuing it. I absolutely prefer that someone get a, a commercial location and, and, and run the business there. I do understand that there's, Mr. Sheinuss feels that there's never going to be cars there, and I, I take him at his word, but I know myself I wouldn't feel comfortable buying a car without seeing it, and then there are probably other people that feel that way too, and I, I just don't feel that this is an appropriate location for a Class II license. So, those are my thoughts.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
I, I respect your comment, Mr. Chair, but I think the main, primary issue here is that there have been licenses issued before that have been online licenses with no cars in the yard, no vehicle transports, no nothing, no flags, no signs, no, absolutely nothing. And some of them worked, and some of them haven't. I think that's the thing we should be making our decision on, because in this case, I think there's some prior work that's been done that's not, has not been licensed here in the town of Carver.
There may be, and everyone will feel differently. I just, personally, I don't feel this is an appropriate location for a, a Class II license.
And I, I'm not debating that question. I think, the other question is, you know, it's already ongoing, and I think it needs to stop.
Anyone else? Mr. Carter?
Up for my two cents, and I think I fall more in line that I don't think this is the appropriate location, and I just can't believe there's not a, another way that having an online business out of your house with two separate locations where you're selling vehicles from one location to the other can't be worked out, but I don't think it's the right location in this residential neighborhood.
All right. Well, anyone else? Mr. Uh, Mr. Cannon, do we need to take a motion to deny the request for a license?
I'm saying, I don't believe you do need to, if there's not a motion made.
If there's no motion, then there's just no license.
Right, there's no license.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion? All right. Hearing none, and the application fails.
I have a question, though. I mean, is there anything that this board can do regarding the current situation that is taking place?
Well, I think as far as vehicles being stored or other businesses being run, I think, I think that's something that needs to be brought up to our zoning enforcement officer and have them go and take a look.
It's right here in the letter. I've been selling cars here and there on the side through his father's license on, on the property.
I think perhaps Mr. Sheinuss can have a conversation with, with Mr. Palmer offline, and they could try to resolve that issue. Any, any issues there? Okay, that, is that okay? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn from the public hearing? Yes, Mr. Palmer?
Well, I was going to ask a question. Should we, you don't want to take any action. I'm trying to think of whether the board should take official action.
Mr. Cannon, are you sure we don't have to make a motion?
I think, I just for the reg, I guess I'll make, I'll make a motion to deny.
I would feel more comfortable with that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to deny the Class II license to Philip Sheinuss, DBA, Cape Cod Auto Wholesale, located at Nine Island Farm Road, just so we have a, a record. So that's the motion.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second, ma'am.
I just have a question.
Yes, Mr. Palmer?
So, so let's just say he can come back and he can go and research a different way, talks to the state reps, talks to anybody he needs to talk to, to find out if there's something we're missing here. Can he then come back, and, and this isn't like a black mark on...
No, no, of course, he can always come back, yeah.
Mr. Cannon, is there a different plan?
Different plan?
Certainly, if they're at a different location, I believe it'd be appropriate to come back.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Palmer.
So, Mr. Palmer, are there other licenses that we've approved in residential neighborhoods for this type of business?
All right, just get sure, two examples here.
Yeah, I think, I think your list has, I'm guessing...
Mr. Palmer, I'm, I'm sorry, you, you need to come back to the, the microphone.
I believe that, so I believe there's a, the list that we have, I think there are, and Elaine can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have one, two, maybe three or four, is that sound right? Yeah. So we have three or four that are currently, I have not, I'm not cognizant of any of these other locations having vehicles there. I've never received a complaint. I've never had a reason to visit them. So I wish I could offer more, but I just don't have any, I have no history of dealing with any of these other...
Yeah, and several of them are quite old, and, and am I correct?
Yes, some of them are fifty, fifty years old. I don't know if, I don't know if it's just more of a legacy thing to renew their license each year, and I just don't know. But I've never been contacted for any reason relative to these other properties, these other locations.
And the ones that you had that were restricted, was that recent?
Yes.
How recent was that?
One was in twenty, this is a renewal of the license in 2025, but these go back not that many years. The two I have here that's online selling, and they're both, they've both been complying now for quite a few years. So, I mean, it's, it's not that it can't be done properly, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, there's one on 22 Ransom that's fifty, been fifty years.
Fifty years, and you would never know it, that's the thing.
I've never received a complaint.
Right. So it is, so it is possible, and...
Because that's my concern, is if we've done it to others in town, that we should give them a chance maybe, and if it, and again, would be enforced, have restrictions, strict restrictions on that, and if it's not enforced, then...
We have a motion and a second on the board. If somebody would like to recall that motion, then we can have another motion. Is...
That's just my saying.
Yeah. Well, I, I kind of feel the same way. I don't, I don't want to stop someone from doing a business, but it has to be done right. And that's why I brought these two, and the one that said he was going to do it right and didn't, and then, but then did eventually, and the other one that's been doing it right for years. And, you know, it's never, neither one has been a problem since. So it, I know it can be done properly.
All right, we have, I believe we have motion and a second to deny...
So I'm going to withdraw my second, how about that?
All right. Okay.
So... I guess I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay. Draw the motion. Would you like, is there another motion?
I'll make a motion...
I'll make a motion to close the hearing if nobody's gonna vote.
Well, are you looking to make a motion, Mr.?
I'll make a motion to approve the license pending placing the restriction. Can you repeat what you had on that?
Yeah. I'm gonna do, read both because they're a little different.
The second one.
The second one. Okay. Uh, no vehicles to be, no, wait a minute, hold on. License is for internet sales only. No vehicle or transport carriers allowed at the address. No vehicles to be transported, ported to and from the address with or without a dealer license. No vehicles for sale at residence, including private sales. No storage or repair of vehicles.
That's my motion. And is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion. I'll, I'll just repeat my comment that I just don't, I can't vote for this. I don't think it's an appropriate location. Anyone else? If not, if not, we'll go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the motion fails. All right. Is the motion, is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming in tonight. We truly appreciate it. Mr. Palmer, thank you for all your help. I know we're running way behind here in our agenda, but while we have Mr. Palmer here, we do have one other agenda item farther down.
Seven ten.
It's a seven ten item, yeah. Our discussion and possible vote to increase building inspection fees for residential and commercial industrial effective January first, 2026. I think this should be a very short discussion. We've already discussed this at a previous meeting. We just needed some updated paperwork. Would anyone mind if we took this out of order? And does anyone have any questions on this? And if not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second. Discussion, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
You're welcome.
All right. Good job. All right. We will go back now to our six twenty-five agenda item, which is a discussion and possible vote to waive the bylaw restriction in section seven dash eleven to our Jim Ellerman to serve on both finance committee and redevelopment authority. Is Mr. Ellerman here this evening?
I do not see him, Mr. Chairman.
So obviously you're, you're aware that when you serve in certain committees and you want to serve in the finance committee, the select board needs to grant that permission. I personally don't see a conflict between the redevelopment authority and the finance committee, so I have no, no issue with this. Does anyone else have any thoughts on this item?
A question. Is this, is this person on the redevelopment authority and wants to come on the finance committee?
Yes, they're currently serving on the redevelopment authority.
I, I guess I was on that finance committee for many, many years and I believe that you should be independent regardless of conflict. So I'm not, I'm not inclined to vote in favor of waiving the bylaw.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Ms. Hewitt?
Yes. Um, although I, I didn't like it very much personally. The town did vote to change that so that if you wanted to be on the finance committee and on another committee, then it was a select board vote. So.
And we did previously approve a member of the school committee to serve on the finance committee.
Right.
That's right, we did.
So if there's no other discussion, would someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Oh, sorry. I just would like to, well, I just wish he'd showed up so we could talk to him and find out a little bit about him and, and I don't know him, but.
I'm sorry, John.
It would be, it would be helpful if he, if he came to the meeting to explain his, his desire. It would be helpful. That's my only issue.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to allow Mr. Ellerman to serve in both the finance committee and redevelopment authority?
All in favor?
All in favor. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, so it's three to two. Am I correct? All right. All right. Thank you. Uh, next is a discussion and possible vote for a land exchange opportunity at the Union Church to expand the Union Cemetery. I believe we have some folks from the Union Society here with us tonight. Thank you for coming in, folks. Sorry you had to wait a little bit for us.
It's okay. Thanks for hearing us.
And Mr. Woods, thank you for coming in as well. If you could just introduce yourself for the folks at home.
Robert Andrews. I reside at Four Andrews Point Road in South Carver.
I'm John Woods, Deputy Director of Operations and Maintenance for the town.
All right. And as the board will recall, this came, initial thoughts came about because we have, um, we have some residents that are currently residing on Union Church property and that was recently brought to our attention. And, uh, so we've worked a little bit on a land swap. And, uh, Mr. Cannon, why don't you give us a little background of this and then?
Sure. So the applicant did come in front of us informing us that there are some residents actually on church property and they did propose a land swap where we would take control over that property and we would not have to, you know, move any, any burial grounds there. Uh, and in addition to that, what they're, they're looking for, and Elaine just stepped off. I don't know if I can scroll down on this, but if you see their, their building there, the existing church, you can actually see it's right on the property line. They really don't have any room over there to do any even maintenance. Um, you know, certainly painting or reciting or replacing a window that'd be on town property. So they're looking for that additional space down there, if you will, at the bottom of the screen there. You can see that dashed line. That's something that they're looking to do again, as a, as a swap for the property. And then also at the top, and again, I apologize here, just kind of scroll through, they want to put in a parking lot for their church. You know, most, most churches do have parking lots. There is no parking lot here at all. So they're looking for some additional land, if you will, the, that second row or third row of parking. That's all town land right now. They're looking for that donation of land also. In addition to that, we would be getting access, again, just, just north of the, the church property there, up at church property. I consider that to be the main access to the, to the cemetery. I know we have different access points, but it, it is kind of the main access there. It'd be nice if we had an easement over there so we could, you know, traverse over there.
Yeah. So for the people at home, there truly is a small amount of land. So on the, on the left-hand side of the church, there's the driveway into the, into the cemetery. That, that's part of the land we would be granting them. And then on the right-hand side of the church, there's a little bit of forested land over there as well. Uh, in exchange, in exchange, there's a plot behind the church where a number of residents are, are currently residing and the Union Society would be granting that to the, to the town. Mr. Woods, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
Nope. I think everything was touched, we touched base on everything that we've discussed.
And Mr. Cannon, am I correct that with the agreement to donate some or swap some land so the Union Society is able to build that parking lot, that how would be granted exclusive access to that?
Correct. Yes, the opposite. Yes.
Okay.
It would allow us to park there.
Yes, that.
Sir?
That, that is correct. We, we want to be good neighbors. And so there are times when there are activities going on in the cemetery and, and those folks have no place to park either. So if, if we're able to fund the, this parking area, as far as we are concerned, that's open to town residents. If there's burials, just people in there visiting loved ones, John with his crew in doing maintenance, that should be an area that's available for, for everyone to park.
And just so everyone's aware, if the board approves this tonight, that's not the final word. This would have to go to town meeting.
Correct. Be voted by a town meeting.
And there's obviously some work that the attorneys are gonna have to do on the, on the verbiage on this, uh, this land swap. Does anyone have any questions?
I have two questions.
Yes.
First, just to point out that I know we've referred to residents residing there. This is, this is the cemetery we're talking about, so it's, people are buried there. I know we're trying to be nice and say that, but I just didn't want anybody confused, especially at home.
I appreciate that.
That this is, um, cemetery property. The second point is the new parcel that's up top. So that would be the, the church would be responsible for clearing that and putting on the parking?
That is correct. That is correct. To be a little bit more specific, what, this is just a proposed parking situation. About sixty percent of that is currently town property. Forty percent of it is owned by the church. We did not realize we went into the woods as far as we do. So there were really surprises on all three sides, quite frankly. But yes, we would plow it. We would maintain it. We would ensure.
But even the construction to take the trees down and all that, nothing's on the town on that?
Yes, that would be our responsibility to do when the time comes. Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Are there other questions from the board?
So the area that we're talking about right now is just trees.
Yes.
And there's no other use for that property? I mean, is it a buildable lot? Is it anything else that it could be used for or is it just?
I mean, it possibly could be a buildable lot if someone wanted to live right in the cemetery, I guess. But I personally think it would be a nice extension.
I think it is too, but I'm just thinking a taxpayer may be saying, hey, you know, if I know that was for sale, if I know that something was, we could do something with it, it'd be probably knocking on our door.
Yeah.
But I like the idea, I like the idea of the parking. I like the idea that that's something we won't have to maintain, right?
No, the parking will be on the church and the other part of it we're gonna make for more cemetery lots.
And it just makes everything nice and clean.
It just cleans it up. The, the use of the cemetery won't change. None of the roads are gonna change, no access, anything like that. Like you said, it just cleans up all the property lines and, and.
And again, we do have residents buried behind the church on a, on church land that we thought was our land.
And through you, Mr. Chairman, I, I, if it can't be at this meeting because it's not on the agenda, I would like to follow, follow up as to the ownership of the church with the grant that we gave, I don't know, a month or so ago, just to see if that's been cleared up. But if it can't be talked about now, I understand.
Well, I think, I think that is relatively pertinent to this and, and I think if you could just expound on that a little bit.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Duke had to leave earlier, but we expect to have that this Friday.
Great.
Are there any other questions?
I just wanted to point out, just so you're comfortable with this, that parking area is not large enough to be a house lot, so we're all set.
Okay.
All right. I'll make a motion that the select board authorize the town administrator to work with town council to explore the possibility of a land swap with the Union Society as, as shown on the plan at tonight's agenda packet with the intention of bringing an article to annual town meeting.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next is a discussion and update on the Ediville Festival of Lights. Thanks for coming in this evening. Sorry you had to wait a little while for us.
No worries.
Okay. What would we like to?
Um, we are just coming tonight to ask the board to approve an overflow parking. The overflow parking would be at the former site on two thirty-five Main Street of King Richard's Fair.
This is the same site that you used for overflow parking for King Richard's Fair, correct?
Correct.
And Sergeant Raina, thank you for coming in this evening. I believe Chief Doofly has reviewed this and he has no, there are no issues?
That's correct. Chief Doofly emailed Mr. Cannon to the board, through the board today, his points on it that if, about their request to use two thirty-five Main Street, I'll highlight a couple of his points. If we're gonna use two thirty-five Main Street to promote parking lot, it's gonna require some additional officers. It's gonna require signage directing traffic to two thirty-five Main Street. There, it's gonna require exterior, exterior lighting both inside the parking lot and for the exit and entrances, and it's gonna require buses. So consistent with how we use it for King Richard's Fair.
Okay. And do you have a plan of when you want to start this?
The option would be going forward, so from this weekend forward, if, if possible. It, it is not likely that we would use it this weekend. And overall, this is just in the event that parking lots were to fill at Ediville, then we would use that. It, we're not anticipating crowds such as the fair saw or anything like that, but this is just to make sure that there is something in place should that be needed.
The reason I ask, I would imagine if the board did vote to approve this, that the approval would need to be conditional based on a lot of the similar conditions that we used when we approved the King, the additional parking for King Richard's Fair.
Correct. We should have conditions on this.
And do we have those conditions readily available?
We do not have those tonight, no.
And, and Mr. Chair, it should probably include the conditions that Sergeant Raina just listed.
Yes, correct.
I agree. Is that something you have access to, Mr. Cannon?
I, I do have access. We could turn those into conditions.
But I mean, could you do it fast enough that we could make a motion?
I was gonna ask that question. Is there a formal plan that's in place or is this just ad hoc?
We did, I'm sorry, we did put quite a few conditions on, on the King Richard's Fair.
Correct, we did.
And I would imagine we will want to do that. Is that something we have access to?
I mean, these were very specific ones that our, our new chief is telling us.
Yes, exactly. So, so again, our conditions, I think, is to be the additional officers as the chief requires to maintain the staffing, signage directing the traffic to two thirty-five Main Street. Again, exterior lighting both inside the parking lot and at the entrance and exits to two thirty-five Main Street because it is gonna get dark so early. And then buses as needed. The chief and I, we actually worked this past weekend at Ediville to observe the traffic to compare it to King Richard's Fair. And we both noted the same thing, that this is a much different traffic pattern than King, King Richard's Fair. King Richard's Fair pattern is very heavy. It's very consistent until one thirty PM, which is why we get such overload and we need to dump cars off of Meadow so fast. This traffic is much more slower, much more sporadic. People appear to be coming in accordance with their train ride ticket times. So they're coming very slowly over the course of the day. Saturday, which was the busiest day there, I had worked the complete day there. By the time we started to get farther down the lot, the earlier lots had already started emptying out. Most people are staying approximately two to three hours. So they're not staying the whole day and right up to closing time. So I'm not sure that we will need to use it, but we need to have a plan in place. And I would suggest those conditions which the chief emailed, Mr. Cannon, so that we can enforce it.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we would have to amend the entertainment license for King Richard's Fair.
Okay? And that's not on the agenda?
Correct. That is not on the agenda.
Okay. Well.
So, Mr. Chair, could I just ask one more? You said signage where?
So the signage would be directing to traffic to two thirty-five Main Street. So it would be along Meadow Street is what I would assume because that's how they would be coming down Pine Street to Meadow, Meadow over to two thirty-five, how we ran the traffic plan from King Richard's Fair. Because if that lot were, happened to get overloaded, that's how we'd send the traffic.
So then you send them down Meadow?
We send them down Pine to Meadow, Meadow back up to Main Street and they come into two thirty-five.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
We do have a meeting December fourth, but there, we don't have forty-eight hours to put that on the agenda. And my concern is this, that's, that's not on the agenda tonight. Maybe what we could do, maybe what we could do is add a very quick agenda item to the end of our meeting. On, let's discuss it tonight and let's add a very quick agenda item toward the end of our meeting on, on December tenth and, and, and vote at that time. I think that way we can have all the conditions and we can run them by the fair folks first. So if they're unable to attend that meeting, do what they can, they can have a chance to review them.
May I ask a question here?
Sure.
In, when we previously came before you for that entertainment license, this was discussed that if we needed to, we would come back before you. And we did actually, you know, we had messaged in to Mr. Cannon with this specific request. So I would, I would hope that we would be able to do this this evening as we did put things in place on our end to make sure that that happened in order to.
And I appreciate it and I don't know if there was some miscommunication somewhere, but it's not on the agenda. And we can't, we can't entertain a vote on something that's not on the agenda. So we just, we can't, we can't do that.
Correct.
It is, it would be a violation of the open meeting law. So we can't, we can't do that. So our hands are sort of bound here. So why don't we discuss what the proposal is and then with something we can vote on on December tenth? If, um, people are.
Would we be able to approve temporary approval to use that site while everything's being done and then formally? So just limit it to a date so we'll, we'll approve, you know, temp, if you need a. know, temp, if you need it, for like, say, this weekend? We could, say temporarily, we'll approve the use of that.
Mr. Cannon, do you see any way to do that under the agenda we have?
Just have verbal conditions.
Because you're not, yeah, you're not, you're not having to put all the conditions.
I think they understand the conditions. Temporary for one weekend, I think we could, to give it to the, to the December 10th.
Do you think under the agenda item we have listed, that would qualify?
Yes.
Okay.
But we'd have to make the conditions verbal.
Yep.
At the very least.
Absolutely.
And really, the only addition, we have the original rules for the King Richard's Fair. The only thing you're adding are lights.
Lights, because it gets dark so much earlier.
That would make sense.
And additional officers as needed.
Which they've always done, correct.
And signage.
Mm-hmm. Signage directing to 235, because what's gonna happen is people are gonna go by that, and the GPS, they're gonna put in the GPS on how to get there, because that, that would just be the best way to do it. We've talked about.
Okay.
So, what's the date? I, so, I'll make a motion that we temporarily allow overflow parking at 235 Main Street until December, what are we saying?
10th.
Second.
The motion.
And, and with interior lights, both inside and outside?
So it's exterior lighting? It's like the light towers.
I mean, exterior, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, with inside and at the main entrance?
If they needed to go there, yes, absolutely.
Gotcha.
Mr. Cannon, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hoffman?
I have a question. So, let's say that you decide that you need that. How are you, how far in advance do you need to tell the buses, or to get the buses?
Um, so we have a plan in place with the, the Carver Public Schools busing system, so that we're, we're, we're in contact with them throughout the week, so it's Wednesday, Thursday, that we touch base with regard to Friday, Saturday, or Sunday.
So you know by the ticket sales for the, the train?
An anticipation of, and, and again, it is not likely this weekend, but we would like that option should, should we need it. Obviously, we want to make sure that the streets are clear for Carver and be kind neighbors as well, so that's why we, we've come back before you. So I appreciate that, and I'm sorry that there was some sort of miscommunication.
My other comment is, I kind of agree with you, what's not on the agenda.
Yeah, and that is a concern for me, but.
Well, is the Ediville Festival of Lights discussion, so there is a discussion about the Ediville, you know, the Ediville Festival of Lights. This is a condition put onto.
But it doesn't really say discussion of conditions and license for?
No, it, no, it doesn't.
Well, if the board's not comfortable, I believe the aptness, they don't, they anticipate needing this parking this weekend.
If you feel comfortable advising the board that they can vote on this, then, then I'll allow that to go forward. I can tell you, speaking for myself, I'm going to abstain, because I'm not comfortable with the wording of the.
Can I ask a question? Sorry. It, it just is, I don't understand why if we couldn't vote on it tonight, even though we don't have forty-eight hours, it's a topic not reasonably anticipated by the chair within forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. We just found out about disparity now. I don't understand why we couldn't post, revise the meeting tonight and have the vote on Thursday.
You know, that's a, that's a point. Usually, that's something that we hold for sort of emergency items, but this could be considered that type of item. Would you, would you feel comfortable posting it under items not anticipated forty-eight hours?
Yes.
And doing that on December 4th?
Yeah, doing it on Thursday, sure.
Yeah, I think that might be a better solution, Mr. Cannon, thank you. Would, would either one of you, or both, hopefully both of you be able to attend our meeting on December 4th?
Yes, sure.
That should, maybe we could, that, that is a meeting of just poll here.
Correct.
Right? So let's add a very quick agenda item before the poll hearing, so no one has to sit through five poll hearings that might go quite a while.
Yes.
And let's add a very quick agenda item before that and try to get that resolved. So try to be here right at, right at six o'clock if you can, and we'll try to get through that.
And have all those restrictions in place.
Yeah, have all, let's, let's.
I have the list of them, but we'll add them to.
Yeah, let's get together with everybody, make sure, make sure that the folks from the fair see a copy in advance, so if they have any questions, they can get back to you and, and we, that discussion can take place, so we can try to get this done quickly. Everyone feel comfortable with that?
I'll withdraw the motion.
All right.
Yes, and I, I do just want to point this out, that it is, we are representing the Ediville Holiday Festival of Lights at this point in time, rather than King Richard's Fair.
Well, I, I understand.
Okay, I just.
That, that it does say on the agenda.
Sure, but we're, we're just using the words "fair," so I just want to make sure that, that it is.
No, that's a good point. Okay, so with everyone's permission, we'll put this off until our next meeting on December 4th. All right, great. Anyone have any questions before we, we do that?
Nope.
All right, thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Let's see, moving right along, we have a request from Chief of Police Doofly and Sergeant Rayner to approve and sign a conflict of interest disclosures. Mr. Cannon, can you give us a little background on this?
Sure, the, the chief brought this conflict of interest to me, at the advice of the mass chiefs, their, their attorney that helps the police chiefs across Massachusetts, so they're not in a conflict of interest. They've advised all the police chiefs to file this conflict of interest as when they're presenting their department budgets in front of the Select Board and certainly town meeting, that they are not, what do I want to say, there is no financial gain for the police chief as they're doing that. As our police chief is under contract, I see no financial gain from the police chief as he is negotiating the budget in front of the Select Board or a town meeting, so I, I can't think of anything that could be in the town budget that, you know, would overlap into his contract.
Okay.
Nothing.
Okay, and obviously, if it applies to Chief Doofly, then it would apply to Sergeant Rayner when he took over as chief.
Correct.
So it makes sense for everyone to do it. Any questions on the board?
I guess the only request they have is on the form, there is only one signature line, if the, the board could give the, the chair the ability to sign on behalf of the board.
Is there, is there a motion to do that?
You need a motion to approve the, the acceptance of the?
We probably should make a motion to approve the acceptance and authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the board.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, next is the tax classification hearing and revote of the hearing held on November 18th, 2025. I believe we have our assessor here, Olivia Verhagen, welcome back. We also have our assessor here, welcome.
Thank you.
We have the whole board here.
We do, we have the whole board.
Oh, I did see you over there, well, feel free to come right up and join us.
You're okay.
Ms. Verhagen, can you just give us a queef, a queef, a quick rundown of why we're, we're redoing this?
Uh, yes, give me just one second to pull the PowerPoint up.
Okay.
My computer turned off.
Can I, sorry, do you have handouts for the board?
I do.
Okay.
Give me just one second.
All right. Do we all have it?
Yes.
Okay.
This is paper such as.
I thought she had something else. Okay.
Oh, I have something else, yep.
Yes, question, do we need to open a hearing?
Yes.
Yes, it is a public hearing, yep.
The tax classification hearing.
I'll make a motion, open the hearing for the tax classification.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. All right. So why?
So, we are, we did the classification hearing on November 18th. We are redoing it because, to be honest, I, had, we had changes to the tax recap that occurred after the last meeting, and everything is requiring a new vote by the Select Board. I spoke with the DOR, the Bureau of Local Assessment, and they require us to redo the public hearing.
Okay. All right, so, we had a number of votes at the last hearing about various options. Do we want to go through those first?
Yes, so I have those right in front of you.
Okay.
And I've provided every member with a proposed motions paper, just to make it a little more clear.
Okay.
So the first one is the residential exemption. Adopting a residential exemption increases the residential tax rate, the amount of the tax levy paid by the class remains the same, but because of the exempted valuation, it is distributed over less assessed value. This higher rate creates a shift within the class that reduces the taxes paid by homeowners with moderately valued properties. Those taxes are then paid by owners of rental properties, vacation homes, and higher value homes. So these are usually done in places like Provincetown, born places that have a lot of second homes.
And we went through this at the last.
We went through this at the last hearing, so the board recommends no.
I'll move the town not adopt a residential exemption.
Second.
All right, we have motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous, thank you. On to the open space discount.
And we discussed this one before as well, and this, we have no classified open space in Carver. This does not include chapter land or conservation land.
I'll move the town not adopt an open space discount.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous, thank you.
The last one is the small commercial exemption, and we went over this last time as well.
I'll move the town not adopt a small commercial exemption.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous. And on to the residential factor.
Okay.
These numbers have changed since last time.
Yes, so these are the changes that, this is what has changed. So these numbers are different than what I provided you last time. The levy decreased from my last presentation by $374,000. However, from fiscal year 25 to fiscal year levy, to fiscal year 26, the levy increased by $1.4 million. So, and the budget, so the budget increased from fiscal year 25 to 26 by 4.3 million, which increased the levy by 1.4. Our valua, yep. Does anyone have a question?
Oh, no, you can, I have a question, but we can finish, you can finish.
So the valuations by class, these numbers did not change. The valuations of properties did not change since my last presentation, so this slide is exactly the same. I did compare fiscal year 26 to fiscal year 27, for you to see, but we have 83% residential and 17% commercial, industrial, and personal property, which you'll see is the CIP, which is totaled. So when we get to establishing the tax rate, this slide changed from my previous presentation. The estimated tax rate before was $15.11, and it decreased by 16 cents. So if we did a single tax rate, it would be $14.95, taking the levy and dividing it by the value of the town. Which brings us to our next slide. If we did a single tax rate, this is what the average tax bill will be. As I said, valuations did not change last time, so the average valuation listed here is not different, just the estimated average tax bill.
Can you go back? Sorry, can you back?
Absolutely.
This slide is saying that if we're at a single tax rate.
Mm-hmm.
For commercial and residential.
Yep.
That a person's house valued at $547,300 would have a tax bill of $8,182.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just amazed that, that's close to what I'm paying already, and we, and it's not with a single tax bill.
Could you go back one more slide?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you have a slide that shows us the tax bill for the rate we voted last time?
I do, but that's right af, right after this slide.
Okay.
So, in Carver, we don't, or historically, we have not done a single tax rate. We have shifted the tax rate to have a residential and open space versus a commercial, industrial, and personal property tax rate. So we are voting on the residential shift, but it's just easier to discuss it as the CIP shift. So we're gonna do that. So this slide shows you what the tax rate impacts would be based on the tax shifts, 135% to 140%. This slide is comparing, I'll show you this one first, it's residential, fiscal year 25 versus fiscal year 26, and what the difference would be. And then I have it as commercial as well. And this page is the second handout that you have in front of you. You have residential on the top and commercial on the bottom, and I gave you a wider range on the handout to go from 135% to 150%. The Board of Assessors is recommending that the Select Board stay at 140% shift, which would increase the average single-family home tax bill $354, and would decrease the average commercial business tax bill $163. So that, again, this is the average bill based on the average valuation, it's not specific to every home or every business.
And I would just point out to the board, if you look at the second page of the handout Ms. Verhagen gave you, if you wanted the average tax bill between commercial and residential to increase at relatively the same amount, I don't know if you get exactly the same amount, but that wouldn't be a 1.4 shift, that would be a 1.45 shift. That would actually relatively average out the increase in tax bill between residential and commercial. If you do with a 1.4 shift, then the average commercial tax rate actually goes down while the residential rate goes up.
And where, and where are we at now, the 145?
140.
We're at 140 right now.
We're at 140.
The tax rate will go down for residential and commercial, just the average tax bill will increase for residents.
Yeah, I meant to say the tax bill, I thank you.
That's okay, you're welcome.
Thank you for, thank you for correcting me. Yeah, we, we were at 1.45 a couple of years ago, John. Last year, the board voted to go from 1.45 to 1.4.
Go down.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So just, just be cognizant of the fact that if you want.
So, so that's what we voted at our last?
At the last meeting, we voted to adopt a tax shift to 1.40.
Yes, and I have the historic on the screen as well, from 2020 to 2024. The town did have a 145 split, you lowered it last year to 140.
I do have a comment too.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Rayner.
So I did look into, we have our tax levy, and then we have a debt exclusion for the elementary school, which is gonna go on for a long time. The way you can control the shift and reduction in taxes to residents is if you apply money is if you apply money to the debt exclusion amount. You know, I talked to our finance director, so we already do, each year, we do $100,000 against it now. So hypothetically, if you increase that amount, it would drop the overall levy that's used to calculate the taxes, and you could influence the tax rate that way. So I'll do some more work on it. It would be, it wouldn't, you couldn't do it next year. You'd have to like put an article together to start the process, but you would have the option going forward to say, if I wanted to, you know, manage the rate that's going to the residents, it's another knob, so to say, that would help you to do that. You just put more money towards the debt exclusion. We do $100,000 a year now. If you increase that, you could actually influence the tax bill and bring it down. And something to pursue in the future. I'll make a motion that town accept the residential factor of 0.9204, which is what we voted on last time.
I'll second that. To that, the shift is 1.40.
It's the 1.40, the residential factor is 0.9204 equals the 1.40. So that's what we voted last time. I'll make the same motion.
So we have a motion. Sarah, you seconded it, right? Ms. Jones, you seconded the motion, right?
Yes, yes, it's a shift. We're not approving the rate.
Right, we're approving the shift.
The factor, we're actually, we're approving the factors 0.920.
And I just, just speak for myself, I think that when I look at these new numbers, that increases the average residential tax bill quite a bit, while it actually looks like it lowers. Am I correct, Ms. Verhagen, it actually lowers the commercial, the average commercial tax bill?
It lowers the average commercial tax bill $163, and it increases the average single-family home tax bill by $354.
I can't support that. I don't think I can support that. Is there any further discussion?
I agree with your mark.
Well, can we ask Mr. Verhagen, can you give us some more examples? For example, what the shift to 1.35 would be versus 1.50?
Yes, so the shift to 1.35 would increase the single-family home average tax bill by $436 and decrease
Another question.
the commercial tax bill by 623. Yep.
Can you explain why it changed so much since the last meeting? Because at the last meeting, we voted the same amount.
Yeah.
It didn't seem to have that same effect. So I'm, I'm trying to understand why it's, uh...
Because the levy decreased from my last presentation. So my last presentation, I had incorrect numbers.
So if the levy decreased, shouldn't the tax bill go down?
Valuations went up, but the tax rate went down. It's, the tax bills are going up because valuations went up. The valuations didn't change, just the amount of the levy that had to be distributed between the tax bills changed.
So the value of the property or the town increased?
No, it stayed the same since my last presentation, but it increased from last year. It increased from last fiscal year.
So the calculation was just not correct?
The calculation was incorrect at the last presentation, yes, because I had an incorrect levy.
And could you give us what it would be at 1.45?
It was right on.
Tom's got it.
At 1.45?
The, the increase on the bill.
Yep, it's on this.
The average single-family home at 145% shift would increase $272. The average commercial business tax bill would increase $296.
That's why I said that, because it, that makes them almost the same.
Yeah.
Yes, there'd be a $24 difference.
So we have a motion and a second on the, on the table right now for, to adopt a 1.40 shift.
I'll withdraw the motion, but, you know, I hate to move it in the other direction. It's just, you know, it counters what we're trying to do.
I understand. You're drawing the motion, so you went drawing, you're second?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there another motion? I'm gonna do something I don't normally do here. Mr. Ryan, I'll let you moderate the discussion. I'm gonna make a.
I can make the motion.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I'll, I'll move that we adopt the residential factor 0.9104, which is a shift of what? Which brings us to the 1.45.
Mm-hmm.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is unanimous. Thank you for coming in, folks.
Thank you, and I will have, there'll be an LA5 form for you all to sign after the meeting in the Select Board's office.
And I'd like to work with you on that debt exclusion idea, you know, so we can maybe manage this a little better.
Absolutely.
Is there a motion to close this hearing?
I'm so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we take a quick five-minute recess before we move to our next agenda item, which is the town clerk's request for fees. We'll be adjourned for five minutes. All right, a call of meeting back to order. Our next agenda item is our town clerk's request for fee increases for vital documents and dog licenses. Ms. Cahill, thanks for coming in this evening.
Hi, it's Cahill.
Sorry, we're running a little bit late.
That's okay.
Ms. Cahill.
That's okay.
Isn't that what I said?
Cahill.
Oh.
It's okay, you're close, you're close, that's good.
One of those nights.
Yep, that's okay.
One of those nights.
Okay, so knowing that Rod was increasing some of his fees, I decided to look at ours and thought that maybe it was time to increase our, just our vitals and our dog license fees. They've been about the same forever, and surrounding towns looked at what they charged and thought that maybe we could increase them slightly to be in step with what other towns charge as well. We've had increases in costs for our certified paper. The time it takes to complete some of these records, the complexity of the process has changed a little bit over the years. And this would put us more in step with what others charge. It's not all of our fees, just the vitals right now and dogs. And not kennels, just regular dog licenses.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions on the board?
Do you know offhand how the surrounding towns are for, like, say, you wanna go from, say, hypothetical birth certificates going from $10 to $15? It doesn't sound like a lot.
Right, no, some, some are a lot more. The town of Plymouth charges quite a bit more. They're $20 each for a vital record, which is extreme, but we're going from 10 to 15, so it's, it's not that big of a jump.
And second question is, do you have an estimate of what it potentially costs to process a certificate?
So.
Like, how many hours?
Well, the process has changed, so it's not in hours, it's, it's in minutes, but still, it's more complex. So an older record can't be done on, on the state system. They're getting there. They're getting some of the older records on, but to do it, it's an arts and crafts project. You take the book out, you have to make a copy of it, you have to cut it out, you have to put it on a template, create a template, put it on there before it can go on that certified paper. The certified paper, though, itself, the cost has gone up significantly for it, so.
So do you feel that these costs cover, or you think they're still shy?
This would help, this would help, yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Sure, yes.
Just, and not to put you in the spot, but I'm just curious, do you know roughly how many birth certificates, marriage certificates you do a year?
Ah, gosh, I don't have the number off the top of my head. It is our top sale. I can tell you dogs are around 2,200 dogs that are licensed. Birth, death, and marriage, it varies.
Just curious.
It varies.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'll make a motion to approve the increase in the certificates for the vitals and the marriage intention, and then the two for the dogs. The two, there's only two increases for the dogs, for the licenses.
Yep.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Is unanimous.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cahill. Thanks for sticking around this evening.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
All right, next, we have Chapter 61A, discussion and possible vote, the town's first right of refusal. Bailey Boggs Incorporated, located at Zero Cranberry Road, Assessors Map Lot 10-10-0-R and 125-14-0-R.
Chair, I'm gonna refuse myself. I know the owners.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. My name is Craig Medeirus. I'm actually the attorney who submitted the 61A removal application. As you had indicated, the property is approximately 13.7 acres, located on Cranberry Road, near the intersection of Tremont Street. It is the intent to change the use of the property from just agricultural to residential as well. The land could be used for two and potentially up to three single-family residential house lots. The Cranberry Boggs would be maintained, and they would not be filled in, and it would be, they'd be continued to be run as Cranberry Boggs after the sale. The purchase and sale agreement calls for a purchase price of $400,000 with an anticipated closing date of January 15. If the board does have any questions regarding this application, I would be happy to answer them.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for the chairman?
I do. Well, I just wanna make sure, because our zoning requires for four main lots, single-family homes.
Correct.
It has to be 70% of the lot has to be upland.
Correct.
So is that, would that be the case with the two that you're proposing?
Yeah, so I mean, at the site, which is approximately 13.7 acres, about six and a half acres is Cranberry Boggs, and almost around six and a half, slightly more is upland. As part of the development process, they'd have to get a Form A approved, they'd have to go to conservation for at least one of the lots. They'd also have to go for Board of Health approval, because the setback from the Cranberry Bog to the well has to be 100 feet, 150 feet. So there are several approvals that have to be maintained.
That's correct.
Definitely, but it, it's relatively easy to fit two lots there. The third lot would be a squeeze, and it would reduce, it'd be more narrow lots, which would only accommodate a single house without a garage. So two, two lots would be relatively easy, three lots would be tougher, would require more permitting.
So, so there's Board of Health requirement, there's a conservation 65-foot zone. So there are cranberry, whether it would be cranberry boggs on these two lots?
No, that's, so all three lots could be created without having Cranberry Boggs on them. Two lots would be completely upland, not within conservation jurisdiction. They're actually closer to Tremont Street. They're nowhere near the Cranberry Boggs itself. The third lot would be in conservation's jurisdiction, and would need conservation approval, Board of Health approval.
But that would not be a cranberry bog.
It would not be a cranberry bog, correct.
Okay, so it's another wetland.
And also, one other factor is all the adjoining wells. There has to be 150-foot radius around all the wells, of course, the septic system cannot be in those. So a lot of the wells on the street are located around the front of the street. So like I said, the third law is not a sure thing. It appears there are definitely two lots, potentially three.
Okay, great, thank you.
We have our conservation here with us tonight. Sir, if you'd like to.
A conservation agent.
Thanks for coming in this evening. Looks like we have three different recommendations on this property. Planning is voted not to purchase, conservation is voted to purchase, and assessing is voted not to purchase. Can you tell us, so conservation, have they, have they voted to use any of their conservation funds? And their land acquisition fund to purchase this property?
They have not. So the Conservation Commission has a fund for land acquisition. There, you know, isn't enough money to purchase this, you know, entire lot, the sale price that was listed on there. We did discuss that after the commission voted to recommend this for right of first refusal. And essentially, you know, like, there was, you know, three board members of the five that were, you know, on the Conservation Commission present for that vote to recommend right of first refusal. And, you know, I think the feeling of the board, you know, it's not to necessarily say like, hey, this is the property that we, we need, we need to acquire as a town, but it's more so that, you know, as, as conservationists and, you know, people in Carver who are representing the natural resources, the commission doesn't like to see, you know, agricultural property that is being broken up into buildable house lots and, you know, like, developed in that way, and they're hoping, you know, in the future to see, you know, that we can, you know, produce that and hopefully keep some land that is in agricultural use, you know, protected in the long term. So maybe not necessarily to, you know, specifically for this property, but in the future, hopefully, the commission will be able to use some of those land acquisition funds for the purpose of protecting some land that is coming out of 61A. And if you're familiar with this property, it's a beautiful property, it's, you know, like, beautiful bog and some beautiful upland forest as well, which I walked with some of the commissioners, and they just felt, you know, this is a, you know, this could be potentially a great, you know, conservation property for the town. So maybe not this time, but, you know, I would just, I think the commission really just wants to make the point to the Select Board that, you know, hopefully in the future, as 61A properties do come out of 61A and town has the ability to potentially, you know, create some town-owned open space. You know, that's something that the commission seems to be interested in doing in the future.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Cannon, does the town have the money to purchase this property?
The town does not have the money to purchase.
So if the board was to vote to purchase it, we would have to have a special town meeting?
Correct.
So, Mr. Chair, so my question to you, Mr. Singh, is would the Conservation Commission be able to purchase it if they combined what's in their Conservation Land Trust Fund with CPA funds?
So we, again, we don't have time to request CDC funds within the 120-day period of the right of first refusal, because we'd need to have a emergency town meeting. We don't have, you know, time to do that. The commission, you know, has a significant amount of money, but not, you know, like, it's less than $400,000. So it's, you know, I, I recommend to the commission, like, we shouldn't be depleting that land acquisition fund in one go. We should be using it strategically to potentially get, you know, even better properties in the future. And I think that's the case here. So, you know, they didn't just vote this to, like, make your decision harder, but it's, it's really more so to make the point that, you know, Carver has a lot of beautiful open space. And if it keeps getting, you know, put into residential, and it keeps getting broken up into 60,000-square-foot buildable house lots, you're gonna have a whole different face to Carver, and so that's what the commission hopes to obtain.
I, I agree. Thank you for that.
The questions on the board. Mr. Carter.
I guess more questions on, I think I still am astounded by how many times people tell me, and that is, when this comes before us, it seems like the piece of property has to go through many, many, many different approvals still. And shouldn't something come to us for a vote when it's already, you know it's gonna be either two or three lots, or you know the information's correct, there aren't any approvals required?
We normally ask for a recommendation from the various boards before we make our decision.
But to your point, Mr. Carter, it says it was received here, I don't know what office, but October 27th of this year. And this is December 2nd. So it, it starts, I guess it starts on the 27th, the, the 90 days. So if we had known earlier, maybe...
And actually, just to give you a quick rundown of my two cents, Chapter 61A, Section 14, which is applicable to this, does not allow for a purchase and sale agreement with contingencies for the development of the property. So it's actually a catch 22 for the seller as well as the town. The seller doesn't want to spend $25,000 to $30,000 permitting the property and then potentially offer it to the town and then lose that $25,000 or $30,000, because there's no mechanism in the statute to recoup costs or expenses of engineering that they spend. At the same time, the buyer of this property has to buy it unpermitted. So they're potentially taking a risk of whether or not it's two or three lots. In this particular case, the third lot is kind of close. It is possible that it might get permitted, it may not. So to a certain extent, it kind of hurts the seller, because they don't know whether or not they're getting two or three lots. The buyer is buying it with a question mark around it. And nobody wants to spend the significant amount of engineering in the property, because they'd be out of pocket in the case that the town purchases the property. So it's kind of a lose-lose on the seller developer end. That's usually why it's not permitted prior to coming to you, is it's a large expense, which would not be recouped if the property were purchased by the town.
All right.
So, I'm sorry, so I guess my question is, did the town receive this on October 27?
Yes, it did.
But, so we knew it was gonna be sold starting on October 27?
Correct, and we waited for the other boys to weigh in before we put on the Select Board's agenda.
Okay, well, I mean, we, we lost a lot of time doing that, so. Maybe, maybe that could happen more quickly next time.
Anything else? I'm sorry, was there something?
It was emailed to the board on October 27 for review.
No, I mean, it should have been on the agenda, yeah.
Anything else? Is there a motion?
Is the motion to make a motion to not exercise our right of first refusal on on the Bailey Boggs located at Zero Cranberry Road, Assessors Map Lot 10-10-0-R and 125-14-0-R?
All right, we have a motion. Second? Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to not exercise our right of first refusal?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
No, I said aye opposed.
Okay, we don't want. All right, thank you, folks, for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman.
Next up is a health insurance discussion and update. Mr. Carter, do you have members of, sorry, Mr. Cannon?
No, I don't.
I got somebody's name right.
No, I don't.
Do you have, do you have members of the health insurance, is it?
With the Insurance Advisory Committee, yes, they, they are here, and I might ask them to weigh in.
Yeah, why don't we ask them to come up and, and join the discussion?
Now, we have our consultants here that we've hired, we are in a, the process of transferring also.
All right. Well, why don't we have the consultants sit right there and have the members of the board sit over, over on the side here?
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, this is informational only, there are no votes I asked the board to take tonight. The board, I know, is interested in, you know, our, our health, existing healthcare, and where we stand in which group. But again, just wanna give the board information that I've received from our consultant right now to the Gateway Group, different than our consultant here tonight who's helping us with the transfer. I know, it's very, a lot of moving parts here, but I do want the, I want the board to know. So we are part of the Gateway Health Group. It's ourselves, Town and Lakeville, and the Old Rochester Regional School System. NFP is the consultant to the Gateway Health Group. I asked NFP on numerous occasions to attend this meeting to help with this information. The information that I have comes from them. I thought they should have been here to tell the, the board directly, but they, they declined my invitation.
That's disappointing.
I do also want to know, the board to know, and, you know, we've had this discussion. The Gateway Health Group is going to disband on June 30th, 2026. So again, that's why we have hired our own consultants to help us move to the next group that we'll be looking into.
Okay.
And we are currently researching our options to go through that, right? But one thing that has to happen right now with the Gateway Health Group, they are anticipating a deficit. When we leave the Gateway Health Group, we're gonna have to pay off that deficit.
And do we have to pay that deficit as soon as we leave the Gateway Health Group, or is it something we pay and?
That is something we can negotiate. We'll have to talk about it as we get closer to it. Currently, Carver makes up about 52% of this group. The Old Rochester Regional School System is about 30%, and the Town and Lakeville is about 20% of that. Right now, the, this NFP has anticipated that that deficit deficit is somewhere in the range of three million dollars, that puts the Town of Carver at about one point five million dollars to get that deficit, um, they have mentioned maybe three ways that we could do to address this deficit, uh, one is to stop the reimbursement for the weight loss drug called GLP-1, um, this is not a significant savings for the group, it's about three hundred thousand dollars a year, I understand, but, uh, you know, if we're losing money, you know, we wanna stop losing money then, so anyway, uh, they also talked about a mid-year health insurance increase, um, so that's another way you'd be raising the rates to bring in more revenue as we're, again, we have this deficit, um, the third option, and this is one that is concerning to the town, they're asking for a triple payment, um, to make up this one point five million dollars if we'll, we pay about five hundred thousand dollars a year into our health insurance, um, we could make that, that triple payment, right now, we have the money from authorized from town meeting, but at the end of the year, again, we'd have a one point five million dollar deficit, we'd have to go to, uh, town meeting to request that one point five million dollars, uh, I do have, we do have a Gateway Health Group meeting tomorrow, uh, these numbers will all be updated, um, fortunately, I'll be able to update the board again, uh, on our December fourth meeting and my town administrator's update, I can just give you the, the revised numbers then, um, we also have, uh, we have an Insurance Advisory Council Committee meeting also on, uh, December eighth at, at three o'clock, again, be able to advise the, the committee on that, um, that group at that time, um, and if we had to, we could put it back on the select board's agenda for December sixteenth, so again, this is informational only, and it's all just gonna pass along to you, these numbers are, uh, more than I anticipated, I, I, I did realize we'd have a deficit coming out of here, I never anticipated to be this high, now, that's to say, again, Gateway Group is working on these numbers to kind of revise them, sharpen their pencil to get as close as we can, uh, and have a better number tomorrow, and I'll happy to bring that back.
Now, you said the Gateway Group was disbanded, right?
Correct.
So that would mean we would have to join another group?
Correct.
So, in addition to the deficit we have with the Gate, with Gateway from them disbending, if you want another jo, if you want to join another group, is there some type of fee you have to pay to join another group?
Sometimes there are any, I believe I'll turn it over to our consultants, particularly with the Mayflower Group, but if I could, turn it over to our...
Yes, yes, good evening, everyone, my name is Danielle Chaplik, and my colleague here, Mariana Gill, and Sue Shaloo couldn't make it tonight, so we're here in her place, and, uh, we are from the Hill Group, and in terms of talking about the path forward, you know, outside of the challenges that are clear that Gateway is experiencing, I, I think everyone is probably very well aware of the market dynamics at hand, and that the entire Massachusetts marketplace, whether public or private sector, are seeing some unprecedented rate increases due to a number of factors, so just keeping that in mind as we go through that process, and, you know, sort of the first step is for us to understand the town's claims experience, and so we have requested that information, and we have some of it from Blue Cross Blue Shield, and are awaiting a good portion of it, I think, from sometime in July, maybe twenty-twenty-four till October of twenty-twenty-five, that has been the request that we have made, and so we are still awaiting that information, now, in order for us to solicit quotes, which we plan to do through three regional, two regional group purchasers and one statewide purchaser, the Mayflower Municipal Health Group, Southeast Regional Municipal Health Group, and then Maya, and we know that Maya has enough of your information where hopefully they'll start to evaluate that in the coming weeks, Southeast Regional and Mayflower Municipal Health Group will need the updated claims information that we have requested, in terms of your question about a potential buy-in of these three, Mayflower does have a buy-in that we would have to assess at the point of entry or the point of them allowing you to enter the group, so we can't say exactly what that is, for Southeast Regional Health Group, that one is unclear, sometimes they do assess a buy-in and other times they do not, I don't know if Mariana, if you wanna add anything?
Yeah, they, they do evaluate the experience, so if the entity is bringing in bad risk, they may ask for a buy-in to offset that experience, that it would cause the remaining pool, um, other times, if the entity is bringing in neutral or positive risk, they have historically not asked for a buy-in, but again, the situation is very fluid, and we don't know exactly what their position will be until the data is provided through the October twenty-twenty-five, but each of these groups is gonna look at your experience and rate your, you differently, because they each have their own methodologies, but essentially, once we have that information and we get closer to, I would say, the January timeframe, hopefully we will be able to undergo that analysis pending that NFP provides that information to us in a timely manner, and then, you know, in terms of just making sure that we're doing our due diligence, looking at other options, because we don't know, obviously, if the town is going to be accepted or not, we're going to look at direct carriers such as Blue Cross Blue Shield, which we understand that, you know, the IAC has been, you know, very, very adamant about that we consider them, in terms of the GIC, I think we are tabling that for now, we've obviously missed the December one deadline, but because, you know, there is an appetite to keep Blue Cross Blue Shield, we wanna really look at those options first, so that, that is our plan for an assessment, and we'll also obviously look at Point Thirty-two and, you know, any other carrier that makes sense, as you all may know, there's been, you know, significant mergers and acquisitions in the mass municipal health insurance carriers, so there are, you know, limitations on carriers now, so we will certainly do our best to, to do a thorough assessment and present that to the IAC and the board.
Before we move any further, uh, I see our school superintendent here, Mr. Leef, Mr. Leef, I'm sorry, I thought you were part of the Insurance Advisory Committee.
I am not a member of the Insurance Advisory Committee.
Would you like to come up and join this discussion?
Sure.
You certainly, if you have a question, come on up.
I'm not a member of the IAC.
No, come on up, I would have invited you earlier, but I thought you were part of the group.
I am not.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a question, do you ladies represent Mayflower?
No.
So who, who do you represent?
We represent the Hill Group, so that's Cook &amp; Company, uh, the town's consultants, essentially.
Okay.
Now, it, it happens to be that both Mariana and I in our former role have consulted on Mayflower and Mariana on the Southeast Regional Municipal Health Group, so we do have direct experience in our past roles with both of those groups.
And, and you mentioned Maya, which is insurance towns, do, do you know whether they have a buy-in?
They do not.
Do not, no.
They do not, or you don't know?
No, they do not.
They do not.
Okay, thank you, you didn't mention that, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could be here, so, so we, the town did hire the Hill Group to help us, one, uh, make an assessment of the Gateway Group, and whether or not we should stay with the Gateway Group, uh, or whether or not we should move on, so they are helping us, um, again, make that assessment, um, that we should move on from the Gateway Group, and then helping us find a new, uh, provider here, I, I will tell you that NFP is doing an RFP, uh, for the entire Gateway Group, and they're under contract to do that, uh, they mentioned that they're gonna do that sometime in February, uh, we are looking to lock into a new group before February, so I don't see us moving forward with the Gateway Group.
Okay, um, is there anything that our insurance advisory committee would like to add, Mr. Maher?
Okay, I just wanna make a few comments about this, and I'm gonna make three points to what I think, uh, are the major contributors to where Gateway is today, and I think as you all know, and maybe you guys don't know, that I'm a regional Gateway founder, going back many years, and probably ten or twelve years as Chair of the Gateway Board, now, um, health insurance is a very difficult thing to understand anyway, but once you get by all the, the policies, the deductibles, the, uh, and, and all this stuff, basically you come down to two things, you got input and you got output, so your input are the premiums, that's what's charged, your output is the usage or the experience, that's people utilizing, people in the groups utilizing their health insurance, okay, so, when you go to the premium, that is established by the board, my sense is that when the Gateway Board set the last premium, they set it way too low, it should have been significantly higher, okay, um, that was a two...
So, if, sorry to interrupt you, but if, if the board set it low, why did the board approve that rate?
Well, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna get into that, well, I'm, see, I'm not part of the board anymore either, but this is my sense of being, uh, you know, on the IAC and, and, and hearing about it, so...
Mr. Cannon, could you answer that question?
You know, I, I believe that NFP missed, uh, their estimate for the rating cre, the increases this year, um, just weren't anticipated, um, uh, that's, that, that's the only take I can have for, uh, Mr. Chairman, I do know, you know, again, just kind of my general discussions, that, you know, um, healthcare costs across Massachusetts, and I believe across the country, are, are, are growing at a rapid rate, um, I did hear recently about just, you know, the hospitals and the doctors, uh, they are kind of catching up to the inflation that we had a few years packed, passed, uh, so that every, you know, every operation is costing more, every doctor visit is costing more, uh, I have also heard that the utilization is up, which isn't a bad thing, that means more people actually go into the doctor when they're sick, um, but that is also having a significant increase in, in, in our rates.
So, but anyway, that, that was, that was set too low, and it was actually a two-to-one vote with three members voting, and Carver voted no, and that was the right vote, so that was artificially low, and that added, that significantly added to the position that we've got today, the other part of this is the experience or the usage, okay, and that is way up, now, I can remember back when, this goes back a number of years, that we experienced another, um, deficit on the Gateway Board, that's when I was Chair, and we did manage to work our way through it, it wasn't as big as this one, but we had in a single year, and again, you can, you can, the board can control the input, which is the premiums, that's under your control, you can't control the output, we had one, one year where there was a set of triplets and two sets of twins, all born premature, all spent months in the hospital, millions of dollars, okay, you can't control that, and we were able to work, work our way out of that, so, you got your input, which is in your control, you got your output, which you can't, which you can't control, and the third thing I'm gonna bring up is the thing that I've been, I've been talking about in front of this board and others for ye, for the past few years, is the stability and consistency that was not in the administration in this building, uh, before, and that would be the town administrator and the, uh, finance director, which we do have now, but we didn't have that, and nobody was keeping their eye on the ball, because this should have been done about three years ago, not now, and we wouldn't be in this position that we are now, so, those are the three things that I think contribute to, the major three factors that contribute to this current position.
Can I add?
Sure.
Yeah, I am Tom Pinto, President of the Education Association, part of the Carver, um, first of all, like I said, I think this all started about, I think, past about two years ago, where we were notified, I think, uh, like a week before open enrollment, that we were gonna be moved from Blue Cross to HPI, um, again, that kind of, there's a fuzzy, um, world of like unfair labor practice, but I was able, actually, then Glenn came on board, and actually, we were able to connect with the town administrator, we're actually to establish an IAC, something I think we hadn't had since the last PEC agreement, which was like six years ago, and we were able to kind of, by law, actually, you know, under Massachusetts thirty-two B, Section Three, kind of establish that, that communication between administration and unions, and unions, because, you know, technically, any changes to health insurance at all needs to be run by the Insurance Advisory Committee, and again, we're an advisory committee, we can say, like, we advise you to do this, and you guys can tell us, like, thank you for your advisory, but no, like, we're not, again, it's an advisory committee, but again, we were kind of able to establish this all, and, um, and, and so I'm glad that we're able to have this communication, again, so this kind of all started with the HPI, I mean, for my members' sake, I can say it's been kind of a disaster, we've had, people have had bills unpaid, uh, people have lost psychiatrists, dentists, whatever, so it's been a total thing, and then back to the rates, uh, when we were talking about, again, IAC has to kind of vote and prove rates, um, so this was a huge discussion we had last April or so, and, um, NFP, the consulting group, was kind of thrown around the eight percent number, and I, I believe Sue from Cook &amp; Company at the time kind of came in and said, like, I think we're more at twelve, and that was a deep discussion we kind of had as a group, like, 'cause again, we wanted to kind of get out of this, move to a safer harbor, everybody's kind of looking at, you know, Gateway as, as, it's, it's kind, it's going, it's blowing up, it's over, so like, how do we then get our group into a safe harbor with the health insurance made, provided we want, again, in the process, what we're doing, kind of frustrating that NFP is not putting out the, the information until February, which, again, I could go down another rabbit hole, but I'm not gonna, but again, it was a huge discussion we had about the rates, and that we wanted to make sure that we have rates high enough to get ourselves out of this, and again, the recommendation from the consulting group at the time, again, obviously, a lot of things have happened in the health insurance world, as they've mentioned, but again, we've kind of got ourselves in a situation which, as an IAC and as a group in Carver, we were discussing in May or April that we didn't want to get involved in, and that as members, again, that rates are gonna come out of our pockets too, but again, we were saying we're willing to pay those, you know, that money, that we'd have money for the tail end to come off that, so we've kind of found ourselves in this perfect storm that we're in, and again, you know, we're continuing to have conversations, I, you know, I can say I appreciate the open dialogue, you know, Bill and everybody, we've been working together, and Glenn, like I said, I mean, like we said, we're working together on this, but again, it's kind of this perfect storm we're kind of getting, and again, I think our goal, and like everybody else's, is how do we get out of it, and how do we find ourselves in a safe harbor, so, and we're looking to work with everybody and move forward, so.
Dr. Kelly, do you have anything you wanna add? Questions from the board?
I just, I, I wanna know, this, um, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Tom Pinto.
Who did you say wasn't doing their job?
Uh, well, in my opinion?
Yeah.
For the, uh, NFP consultant.
Okay, thank you.
That's my opinion, I don't wanna put it on...
No, no, interesting.
I have information, I feel like, just backing up with this, and I'll say that publicly.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah, uh, as Pat and I go back a long way on this, about ten, well, ten years ago, on the Finance Committee, we looked at changing from the Gateway Group, we were looking at Mayflower, and there is a buy-in, and then it was a quarter million bucks, so I'm assuming it's a quarter million bucks or up.
What was your perspective?
It was, it was huge, and, um, I, I guess my question is, everybody keeps talking about, maybe it's this, maybe it's that, maybe it's just, maybe it's that, but getting back to NFP, there's the, the ins and outs, money come in, money coming out, when you've got a deficit, you gotta increase, increase rates the next year, so, I guess I don't understand, NFP, is this, and it's a consultant, right?
Correct.
Do they bear any liability here, um, I mean, why is the town being left with a one point five million dollar bill, is there malfeasance here, is there something that should have been done that we can go after someone on, um, I, I, again, I don't understand why, you know, if this happened, if there were audits done on this, do you guys get audits every year of the, of the fund at all?
So this is something we started talking about, is getting the cash, uh, the monthly cash flow sheets, start reviewing the claims, something, you know, a practice you do, you start looking at the claims in the beginning, so, but we haven't yet, it's something we've started to establish, look at as of last year, start looking at the claims in, 'cause you look at the monthly cash flow sheets, you kind of look at what your claims in, money come in, money come out, what are your reserves, so, that's something, again, the process that I know Cook &amp; Company does, does print out monthly cash flow sheets, and something, you know, as an IAC, you know, we've been starting, I think, the process of...
Um, but, but when you have this, um, I, I mean, are they try, every single year when you have this annual meeting, and they'll probably come up and say, hey, probably don't say we got a surplus, they probably say we got a deficit every single year, was there growth of that deficit slowly, was, did it go like a soft, up and down drastically every single year, did the books get audited at all?
Typically is, uh, typically it goes up and down, sometimes you have bad years, sometimes you have good years, it's, uh, you know, but again, it's, it's a combination of your, uh, of input and output, you know, it's your, your, set your premiums, you know, at a, at a point that you think is gonna take care of things, but then again, what's the experience gonna be, what's, what's the usage gonna be, and then, we get in, we get into a deficit, deficit situation, when, when you talked about, you know, Mayflower before, it was like ten years ago, and I remember that, the, uh, the buy-in, there was a million and a half, it's probably more like two million now, and it would, and when we've got a, you know, entertaining that kind of deficit, it's, it's absolute insanity to think that you're gonna, you know, deal, deal with a deficit plus that, plus that kind of a buy-in.
But I guess I'm still not getting to the point of, why isn't someone else accountable other than us, you know, why are we talking NFP?
Mr. Cannon, do you have an answer?
I, I do not have an answer, but that is something that we will investigate, uh, we've had those discussions, uh, in-house, and we will continue to have those discussions, and Mr. Carter, to go back to your, uh, question about the deficit, uh, this year does seem to be particularly bad, uh, on the deficit, uh, when I came here in twenty-twenty-four, uh, the Gateway Group had, uh, was walking into a million dollar deficit going into fiscal year twenty-five, um, we were able to pay that off that deficit, um, and, you know, stay even for a while, and then, uh, for this year, again, that deficit just has, has spiked.
And did I hear you guys say that you get recommendations from NFP, but then on maybe recommending a rate increase, but then the town's vote on it?
The board.
The board vote?
Gateway Board.
The Gateway Board votes on it, and they might be getting information saying, hey, it should be a 12% increase, but they decide to vote for an 8%?
They could do that. Yeah.
And my board you're talking about, the Gateway Board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Ryan?
I have two questions. So Mr. Cannon mentioned there are three action items that were going to potentially happen. I just want to get status on that. And also, the second question is, what is the next step there? So how are you going to execute those action items that you talked about?
So we're going to have that discussion with the Gateway Group. Those are three that have been mentioned to us. And again, I just want to kind of put that information out there. I think Mr. Pinto alluded to it. I try to give them the information as quickly as possible. I know the board has been very interested in this, and this deficit is much higher than I had anticipated, you know? So I want to get that information out there as quickly as possible also.
And I think we probably need to have either town administrator updates or subsequent agenda items to keep us in the loop, because it's a lot of money and we're going to have to deal with.
Correct. And to me, this information has really just come to me, we had a meeting on November 18th. This is our first meeting since then, but we do have the December 4th meeting. I can give the board an update, the town ministry update, and then, you know, again, if we have to put it back on the agenda for the 16th, I recommend we do. But there's no action on it today, Mr. Ryan.
Okay.
This is just information for the select board.
Okay. Anyone else on the board? Mr. Neef, do you have anything?
I have no additional information.
Okay. Any questions you might have?
Everything's been covered. I have no questions here.
All right.
Everything's been covered.
Anybody else? Anything before we move on? All right. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next is the approval of the Alcohol Beverage Commission, Alcohol Beverage Control Commission seasonal populations for this year, which is 11,645. Is there a motion?
Do we want to approve the number, 11,645?
Yes.
Do we want to make a motion that we approve the seasonal population of 11,645 for the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission?
A second and a...
You have a motion and a second. And I hate to do this, but I have one quick question for you, Mr. Cannon. How did we decide that 11,645 was the number?
A very careful calculation, mister.
Did you call house to house or not?
We did. Our best calculation is what we see in increases during our summer population.
Okay. So seriously, how do we estimate that?
We look at summer trend, you know, trends in population. We look for a large, if you have large recreational. I know, you know, again, I spent many years working on the Cape. They have large populations. Sometimes the population's double. I've talked about this on the 4th of July, their population can triple. But, you know, the town of Carver is a residential community. It's very, it's very level.
So for example, like Jellystone, how do they count that?
Correct. Right. That's the only one I could, I could think of myself, you know? And for every Jellystone you have, you probably have people who are also moving out of town for the summer. So it really balances it out. That was the only one I could think of, though, Mr. Ryan, was Jellystone.
So my, I forget what the number was last year, but it seems to me it was either exactly this, or it was 646.
I don't recall.
It was like 11,646.
I hope we didn't lose the first one.
It was very close last year.
No, it, correct.
This is what the official census is.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the 2026 licenses, common victual, entertainment, Sunday entertainment, automatic amusement, liquor, wine and malt, Class 1, 2, and 3, and commercial garage. Anyone do it? So I guess I have a question before we start. We had a hearing earlier where we discussed a Class 2 used car license that was in a residential neighborhood. Have we had any complaints or any issues with any commercial, any Class 2 licenses that might be in a residential neighborhood?
No, we have not. We have not received any complaints. Neither has the building commissioner.
Okay. Okay. So as a follow-on, there's 13 Class 2 licenses here to be renewed. Do you know on that list how many of them are residential? And then we also have to ask the tax question, too, right? You know, about...
So with this list, we actually, there are about, like we said earlier, approximately four residential Class 2 licenses.
In this list?
Yep. And on your table in the office is this same list with people highlighted who owe taxes.
So do we just approve subject contingent upon the taxes being?
Yeah. Have there been any complaints or any issues with anybody on this list?
Mr. Chairman, the only issue I could think of was, under the entertainment, we did have an issue with Three Sips Brewing that really has not been resolved, and that was the outdoor fence for the entertainment license.
Correct.
Yes, when, in fact, they were supposed to come back to us, weren't they?
They were.
Correct. Before the, before the 1st of the year.
And have you scheduled a date with them?
We have tried. We reach out repeatedly to them, to the building commissioner, and we're getting a non-response.
Perhaps we don't renew that contract until they, the license, until they come back?
Good. That would be my recommendation.
I might have a follow-on question. How many, at least for the Class 2 licenses and Class 3, for example, do they renew or reapply each year? So did all 13 of these?
Reapply.
Because there was a question that came up that one was 50 years old or something like that.
They renew. Well, those are grandfathered.
They do reapply every year.
But do they have to reapply?
Yes.
Okay. So even if it's 50 years, it would just, they would have reapplied first of all. You have those applications. Okay.
And I guess make Three Sips aware that the only date they have available to them before the 1st of the year is December 16th.
Correct.
So I guess they'll be on that agenda. Okay. Is there a motion from the board?
Is it a blanket to approve all of them, subject to, except for Three Sips, subject to confirmation of tax payments?
Yeah, I would say that's an appropriate motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board?
Did we, did we have a question on some of the liquor licenses before, as far as were they certified correctly, or is it tip certified? I thought we had a... We were, we were now changing when they came in for temporary licenses. At least it was the tip certification, but...
Certainly, one-day licenses, we had quite a discussion on, but I don't believe on the annuals.
Okay. I just remember the...
Yeah, the one-days, Jim, we had quite a discussion on one-days, tip certification, even what alcohol they were allowed to serve.
Do annuals have to do anything with the state? You know, that'd be my question as far as tips and all that.
I'm not sure of the state regulations on liquor licenses, but for the town, we did change this year the one-day special application process, and then we started looking at the other application processes and changed the Class 2 license, which is what prompted Rod to come tonight to this hearing, because now we have a sign-off sheet with the building commissioner, police chief, and fire chief for all Class 2 license applications.
Okay. All right. And I do see in the listing of licenses that under the entertainment license, we have the approval contingent upon inspection by fire and building commissioner. Should that be included in the motion as well? Should?
All right. I'll amend the motion to include the approval by the...
And, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to throw another mention, but Three Sips has two licenses from us.
Yeah, so I said with the exception of Three Sips.
On both the entertainment and the victuals.
Yes. So I'll amend it to...
On, I was going to say, I think it only applies to entertainment license, because really, the only issue I know of is the outside, the outdoor fence, which is not a, I don't think it's a liquor issue.
They bring their food outdoors, don't they?
I'm sure you can, but I always thought that was just the entertainment, I thought was the concern.
No, I think, towards... I think it should be both, probably, for that.
I think for both, because that's the whole idea of having the tables outdoors.
Certainly, we can discuss it on the, we'll put it on the agenda for the 16th, and then we'll discuss it. And you amended your motion to approve the inspection by the fire and building commissioner for the entertainment.
Yes, I don't know if it was seconded.
Was there a second for that?
I was seconded. Yes, I did.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Well, Mr. Cannon?
Only almost an hour late, but the town administrator had an update.
Sure. First, I'd like to congratulate Mike Williams, a Carver firefighter, 46 years on the job and officially retiring. So congratulations to him. That's quite an achievement. One other thing, and this is again with the, with the Carver Fire Department, it is a response to a motorcycle accident that happened on power lines, and this was the use of an all-terrain vehicle to get there. I know we've talked about this before. I certainly know when I was in the town of Rochester, there was a hunter, 81 years old, got lost and disoriented in the woods, and there was no road to actually get to him. This is the only avenue they had to, you know, assist this person. And, you know, we have a lot of land, like it's vacant land, a few of them. So these are very important things to have. I know that, I believe this went out to the board, but for the residents here, EverSource is having a webinar, webinar presentation about their winter national, winter natural gas bills, financial assistance, and energy saving program. That's a Wednesday, Wednesday, December 3rd, from 12 to 1:00 p.m., and I believe that information is on our website. And then the last thing I have to share with the board is, we did have a, if you will, a transfer of Opera funds. We received Opera funds for the Plymouth Street decommissioning of wells. We were not able to spend all of that funding. We actually worked with Plymouth County to reallocate that money towards the meter pit project. You know, $6,420, not a significant amount of money here for the money we were spending, but at least we didn't lose the money, and I was happy about that.
So do we know that all the wells in Plymouth Street are decommissioned now?
All the wells on Plymouth Street are not decommissioned, and that was the problem, Mr. Chairman. Tried as we might, we were not allowed to force them to decommission their wells. It was a volunteer program, if you will, at the end of the day, including the DEP. We thought DEP would be able to make them, decommission the, a number of homeowners refused our assistance. So again, instead of losing the money, we did reallocate it.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Let's see. Topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair 40 hours in advance. There are none. Approval of the minutes of November 4th, 2025.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of November 24th.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
We have the approval of the executive session minutes of November 4th, 2025, not for release.
Make a motion to approve the executive session minutes of November 20, I'm sorry, November 4th, not for release.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Select board announcements. Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just would like to continue to remind people that Shane Gives Thanks is our local food pantry. They are always in need of donations. They do have a refrigerator and a freezer. I think more than one. So they are accepting more than just canned goods, and their hours of operation are on their website and I think on their Facebook page as well.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Hoff?
It's the holiday time of year, so everybody's looking to help those that need some help, and I know the police are doing a toy drive, I believe, this weekend on December 4th, so I think a great idea.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
Sure. The, let's see, Union Church is having a Christmas service, Sunday, December 7th, at 3:00 p.m. 29 South Main Street, South Carver. There'll be carolers and all kinds of Christmas festivities.
Places to park.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
I saw the lights all going up on all the buildings, so that looks, that looks great. The town is in the gazebo tour, right? So thanks to those who put the, put the lights up.
All right. All right. Just a couple of things that I have. My list have already been mentioned, so I'll just add my congratulations to Mr. Williams. 46 years, that's a pretty impressive.
That's true.
Pretty impressive. And again, the police does have their annual toy drive on December 4th. They do a great job, so stop by and support that if you can. Our next meeting is December 4th, and we have meetings on the 4th, 10th, and 16th. So we'll be busy over the next couple of weeks. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Area 58. Appreciate it. Have a great night.